Thank you, everybody, for joining the Communications Committee meeting. It is Thursday, September 22 at actually 1:00 p.m. We're starting right on time. And I, President Bellamy, if I can pivot to you to introduce everyone who's in the room and on Zoom, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Board members in the room are myself, a member Bellamy, a member Holloman stepped out, but he's here. Other than that, we have staff. We have our superintendent, Dr. Bryant. We have Chief Finance Officer, Jim Anderson. We have our Acting Chief Holland in the room. We have Heather Breaks. We have, of course, MJ is in the room for Communications. And we have Katie Grant and Amanda Foster. So that's what's, that's who's in the room.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I can't see who's online exactly.
It is Dora and Kelly.
Okay.
So Member Lessons, thank you for joining us as well. And thank you, everybody in the room, for joining us. I appreciate your time. I unfortunately have had to be out of state this week. So our agenda is, it appears very short, but it's actually very robust. So I wanted to introduce Heather Breaks and actually allow her, if she would, to give us a legislative update. So Heather, can, can you take it away, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all for inviting me today to kind of talk through what we can expect going into this next legislative session. As we've talked about before, we're going to start a new legislature, which is a two-year legislative term. And it's the 33rd legislature. So we're going to have a number of new members this year again, which we've had a pretty high rate of turnover over the last few legislatures. I think, as we've talked through before, we can expect at least a 25% changeover in the Senate, meaning five senators are either retiring or have been redistricted together. And in the House, a 35% changeover. And that, that's at a minimum. We have a number of very competitive races that could result in a much higher turnover rate than that. So what does that mean for us? We're going to have a, not just us, but everyone else is going to have a very challenging job ahead of them in terms of educating new members on their issues. And so when a new legislature comes in, of course, they, they have to organize. So the, the election is November 8th. Because of ranked choice voting, we're going to have, our, our election is not going to get certified until the end of November. And so they have to allow for, I think it's 20 days for overseas ballots to come in. And then they'll have to do the counts. And, and then where they have races that a candidate has not reached 51 or 50% plus one vote, they will start the ranked choice tabulations and our calculations. And, and so that will go fairly quickly, but it's, it's more of a matter of receiving those, those ballots. Once they certify that and know the results, assuming there are no challenges, we, the legislature will start to attempt to organize. And as we heard yesterday or this week, and as always happens, they, they're already in those conversations now and negotiations. So that's not anything new. But once they get certified and really know who's, who has prevailed in their races, they can begin to finalize that organization. That will give us who is in the majority and minority in each body leadership. And then down through the committee structure. And, and so, once we have a really good idea of the two most important committees to us are the Education Committee and the Finance Committee. And so, you know, we'll be hopeful that we have some of Anchorage, Anchorage's legislators on those two committees going forward in each body. In Anchorage, with the number of Senate districts and House districts we have, I was just doing sort of a quick run-through of the races. We have a number of open seats, which means we don't have an incumbent. So there will be a new legislator in, in those seats. And then we have a number of very competitive races. So we could, you know, lose an incumbent in some cases and again, get a new legislator, a new member. So I think, as Jim pointed out in a meeting earlier this week or last, is that if you haven't already been bombarded with outreach from candidates, I have a list of, of candidates for each of the districts and contact information for them. And so I would encourage, as Jim mentioned, reaching out to folks now as we're getting closer, just educating them on, you know, where the district is, what the, the concerns are, what the needs are. Certainly, there's going to be plenty of that in the media. But, you know, versus a, I think conversation, one-on-one conversations are much more effective versus a, you know, blast on the six o'clock that maybe doesn't give as much detail as you could in a one-on-one conversation. And so I think that's really critical as just sort of a building up to session and, and the, the election, really.
And you think we should do that before November 8th with all the candidates?
Yes, I do. And because
I kind of struggle with being too political, but it makes sense.
Well, yeah, I would approach it as more of a educational conversation. Candidates are going door-to-door now and they're hearing constituents. And, and so I think it's important for them to, to, you know, it's, you don't have to go into super, you know, in-depth conversations, but for them to understand what the challenges are that the district is facing will be helpful, I think, for them. And again, you don't need to pick sides. If you know somebody, certainly that's helpful. But if you run down and, and have an opportunity to speak with people, I think it's, it's helpful for them. We don't know, certainly.
Oh, sorry to interrupt. I was just going to ask, a member Lessons asked if you could send a list to, of all those candidates to the board members, either electronically or by paper?
Yes, and I have the contact, both email and phone numbers for their campaigns. So I can get that. I think I got that. I'll just double-check it to make sure nobody else is withdrawn after, yeah, before. I, I may have not updated it completely after the withdrawal. So just kind of moving into a little bit more strategy. I know that the board and the administration are going to be developing priorities and, and sort of finalizing those before December joint luncheon, legislative luncheon. And I, I would expect that we're still going to have funding as a, nothing's sort of changing on that front. BSA, both increase inflation proofing, pupil, pupil transportation funding and as, as much as those haven't been increased since 2017. Aside from the $30 BSA increase that goes into effect next fiscal year. I think, you know, I expect that those will still be on the list. And then the earlier funding conversation of trying to stress the importance of getting something settled with the legislature prior to the district having to finalize the budget in February. And that is, that is a conversation that has, for as long as I have worked in the legislature, always been, you know, a topic, a main topic of debate. There is a tendency for the legislature to want to wait, keep everything on the table until they get to adjournment, which helps to negotiate a final adjournment package. And so my expectation for something like that to happen is not high. Certainly, this year, the legislature forward-funded education. But that only stays forward-funded as long as oil stays above $101 per barrel. And I think yesterday it was, I checked last night, I get a daily email from the Department of Revenue and it's down to $90.58 or something. But it's, it's not, certainly not at $101 per barrel. And so, and we're only two months into this fiscal year. So that's, that doesn't look promising at this point. Things could change. They always do, and we can't predict what it's going to, you know, where it's going to be. But I'm not banking on that happening. So, so certainly, F, you know, sort of leading up to session and then through session, working with partners through the associations, school board association, school administrators across the state, across districts. And, and, you know, really continuing that partnership is important for folks. And we're not the only district in this, you know, and certainly it, at this magnitude. But, but others are struggling as well. So I think keeping those kinds of partnerships strong. The Alaska Municipal League is another that has partnered with Lisa Parity and her group on advocating for funding because it's also a municipal issue as much as a, a school district issue. And so I think those, those partnerships are important for outreach. I know there's conversations about, as the, the board and the administration struggle with the challenges faced with this deficit, conversations about keeping the public, getting the public more educated and engaged. Thank you. We, we've talked to a few legislators and they're at this point not really getting a lot of questions yet at the door. And I think we can expect that to ramp up quite a bit in, in this next month or two. So that's why I sort of stressing some of those conversations with candidates is sort of important for them to be educated as well. But it also helps them engage the public at their door, you know, when they're, when they're visiting with them and in different forums. So and then into session, of course, a number of you have traveled to Juneau during session, which is very helpful. We, of course, are there to help facilitate your meetings, both in office. But then in addition to that, luncheons or dinners where we can have a longer conversation with folks. And, and then, of course, your testimony. And, and then with, I'll just, as an example, Carl was, you know, we set up some meetings to, for him just to phone in to a legislator during the week. And so I was helping him get those set up and facilitating. So those will be important in, in session. And then leading up to the December lunch where we'll, we, I think we'll have, we'll know the results. It may not be a certified election result at that point, but hopefully is going to be, we'll have some clear winners that can attend that lunch and participate. But even before that, I think, starting, we're starting that work now. And that is meeting with legislators. We've had some meetings with legislators, Anchorage legislators in this, just talking to them about, you know, this is coming, nothing new. We've been talking to you about it, but we're going to, it's going to ramp up. And so just sort of that, that conversation at this point. And then Jim and Andy and I will be meeting more in-depth, I think, one-on-one with folks on just more of a, a little more in-depth on, on the budget and how education funding works. And allowing them to ask those questions that they don't really want to ask in committee or they're not coming to go asking, or you don't have as much back and forth to, to explain to them. So really giving them a good baseline going before they get to session. Because as you all know, who, that have traveled to Juneau, when you get there, they have very limited time. It's sometimes a 15-minute meeting is all that they will schedule for you. And in addition to that, they're going to be, the new members will be drinking from a fire hose. So everything will be new to them. And, and not just the legislative procedures and, and process, but policy and education funding is not the only thing that's, you know, going to be, they're going to get bombarded with. And so giving them a more sort of in-depth understanding of how it works. Jim's got some really good material put together so that they can understand sort of how Anchorage is, is different and what the importance is of the funding, you know, the increasing the BSA and inflation-proofing it. And those kinds of discussions. In addition to that, I'll say, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what Anchorage School District is, you know, what we're doing with our COVID relief or those sorts of funds. And why, you know, why do you have such a big budget deficit when you have this reserve over here? And what are you doing with that? I think those kind of conversations, equipping members with the facts before they get to Juneau is really important because they, they're going to get the same thing. And so to be able to give them the, the facts and reasoning, then they can have that conversation with other members. So I think that's really part of, it needs to really be part of our strategy. So, and then I think just getting some of those meetings done. And of course, we can't meet with everybody. We don't know who always kind of, you know, win their races before, before the December launch. But making a good effort at that. And some of, you know, the, the returning members already have a good grasp of, of the funding issues. So there won't be as much education maybe with, with some of those folks.
And kind of like the school board, the chart that shows the fiscal cliff chart, we briefed it the first time at last year's legislative lunch. Yeah. So all those returning who went to that will see it. We briefed it in Juneau at numerous committees to include the joint session, Senate and House, to both finance committees and to both education committees. There will be people who forgot that it was real, but we, there's a good chance that at least half of the legislature will recall that, that it shouldn't be a surprise. The, the actual dollar amount might surprise them. But what Heather, Heather works with Andy and I, especially new legislators. We, we actually, Andy and I give them a whole different brief than what the board gets. We talk about the whole state, how the whole state works. And we compare the difference between the Aleutian Islands and Anchorage. So they have a better understanding of how this, how the foundation formula works across the state differently. And it gives them a, because they need to have that perspective when they're talking to the Bush Caucus or to all the others. So we've been working with Heather for a while. She helps set the conditions to get it started. And then you'll see just a little taste of that on Friday's assembly meeting because of Member Salt's comments. I'll just show one chart and talk a little bit about how we're different statewide. But our legislature, for the most part, outside of the ones that Andy and I have talked to, they don't understand how it works around the state. They know how it works in their district, but it's really complicated. And I mean, I don't know, we've spent hundreds of hours figuring out how all these other districts are impacted by the same things differently than us. And so that's what I try to do with Heather and Andy for new legislators. And some of them, you get to do it several times because it's complicated.
Absolutely.
But we've already started that discussion. We'll come up with a plan, lock it in with Heather. And, and for those that we are somewhat confident will be elected just based off the, the numbers. You know, we can start with them even earlier, just to familiarize. And then, but, but I think the board will see just one slide in tomorrow's brief. But obviously, there's a whole slide deck to that particular thing because it's busy. But yeah, I, I feel comfortable that we can, can do everything we can to educate them. It's just so hard in the first year of a session, by the time they get formed, to, to get something done that's like, like BSA, right? BSAs, foundation formula changes, those are two-year lifts. And even in two years, it's tough to pull it off. But at the end of the second year, every single bill dies. So it all starts over again, as if it was never there. And that's what Senator Beckett, six years to get the re-act. It was three full sessions because every session, it was all new again to somebody. So, you know, Heather and I were talking about making sure if they don't understand anything else but the statutory deadlines for when we have to do reduction in force for teachers, they need to understand that for non-tenured and tenured, if they're a legislator. So they understand how little time they have to get something approved, even if the governor hasn't signed it, if the legislature has approved it, but the governor hasn't signed it yet, but he comes out and says, hey, I'm going to sign this. Then, because it's statute for teachers, everybody else has collective bargaining agreement, right? So 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. But for teachers, it's like this specific date. And we'll have the February budget. And if they haven't made a decision or, or pushed education to the front before that date of non-tendered teachers, because when you're looking at 68 million, you, I think most people realize that's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of staff. So we, we got to get the legislature to, in their minds, know, all right, the day before, that's our last day. To like, get it done, done, voted and approved and everything. Even if they really don't understand yet the whole foundation formula, that's all right. We do need them to understand those statutory deadlines where, you know, Margo, were you in the district when we had to lay off a couple hundred teachers? Three weeks later, we got one-time funding and nobody, nobody wants to do that, right? Nobody wants to do that. And we don't want to stress the staff out in the community, but we want the legislature. I mean, that, I don't want to talk about these deadlines in front of the
I know.
the staff, but the legislators have to know, this is our deadline before we have to do something on the budget that has to get approved by charter in February. And so that's why Andy and I and Heather are going to start earlier this time because there's certain things they, they have to know going in. If they don't know anything else, it's deadlines and that it's not just Anchorage.
Right.
And how this whole thing works around the state. So I don't know.
And we can help with that, with those conversations as well for members. So if we can create that, those talking points. I mean, the, the, once the session starts and everybody's got the hundreds of bills that they're looking at. I mean, I want us to have, to preempt that, hopefully, get in front of that.
Well, the prefiled legislation will, is already, some of it's already being written and drafted around the state. We won't see it generally, some of it you'll see as early as December, but it doesn't get posted till the end of January or middle of January.
Beginning.
Begin, when they first start.
So they don't automatically bring?
Okay. I, I just wanted to jump in real quick and, and recognize, for the record, that Member Jacobs joined us actually shortly after we started online. And, and when there's a, a good moment for, for all of you in the room as well to respond to some questions. And I know Member Jacob has his hand up. I can't see if anybody in the room has any questions.
No, I think we're good.
Is there a copy of the foundation formula where you can start with the BSA and work through and see what every factor is?
It is, it's in our budget book. If you look at the, it's not the executive summary, the, the second tab, it walks through every single step of the formula for ASD to include the local, the amount of money, which for us is about 50% that the state takes from us from federal impact aid, based off how much the local contribution is. It covers every single step in detail and it's at the front of the budget book.
Come out with a summary tomorrow at the assembly meeting.
We are going to provide a general summary, mostly for the new assembly members. And as a starting point to try to answer Member Salt's questions because it's actually, if that's the easiest way to understand it, it's, obviously, it's much deeper than that. But if you go to the budget book, then it, it's got more detail onto each of the steps. And then, you know, obviously, it looks like we just do it for the district. We actually do every single school individually, then roll them up into a district. And then that's, when the state gives us money, it's, it's really every single school because that's how class size works. And that's the first step. So, but it's, I mean, I think it's easy to understand after six years.
I, I would also add kind of to what you were speaking of, when we're talking to our allies, and I realize for the district, it's a little difficult and we can't be blatantly political. But I realized 15 years ago or so, I'm right in the middle of starting dinner and Kevin Meyer knocked at my door. He's campaigning, I had anything to talk about, off the top of my head, I couldn't think of it back. And then I thought, that's stupid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they don't tell you that. But if we alert people, and I'll say as a president, I sent an email out and said, when a candidate knocks on your door? Because right now they are.
Yeah.
Princess Law, put it by your door. And if nothing else, ask them where they are on their retirement. Like just a couple of key points. Because it, it is a time when candidates are really impressionable. If you're on the wrong side of an issue, you go to five houses in a row and they ask you about it, start wondering where you're at. Even, you know, it just, it, it has an impact. So a lot of people that, that don't live and breathe this aren't prepared when someone knocks on it or they have a little chat and they go underway and then later they think about it. But to the degree we can tell people that the funding is key, and if you believe that, you need to make it known, not to any particular party or anything, but just to anyone that knocks on your door, then that's Then that's what they get on the phone to Juno thinking about. The feedback I had was that it was.
Member Jacobs has a, has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Wilson. I I don't, I I don't know that it's a question as much as a comment. I think this has been a really great conversation. I appreciate the presentation and the information from Ms. Ms. Briggs and her assistants this last legislative session. Looking forward to working with her in the next session to come. I think what we can do as board members. Is is definitely leverage our, we we are all on the board because we have deep connections to the community. And how we can stand out from the other competing needs that. Will be coming at new legislators through a fire hose come January is to. Leverage those community connections to make sure we're amplifying our voice by asking the community to contact those folks as well. Certainly, to member Hallman's point, reaching out to make sure folks are making educated decisions at the ballot box in November. But even then, the 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 conversation can't stop on or after November eighth. We we need to make sure that this is a community-wide effort, and so to that end. I don't know if something like this may already exist, but maybe putting together like one of our, one of the amazing slides that Jim has. Coupled with some basic information, might be good for some sort of citizens guide. You know, one oh, education funding one oh one to to best equip someone who's kind of new to the advocacy. Arena as they talk with candidates, as they talk with new legislators. Because this is going to be important if we're going to get something passed in the first session, it will take an abnormal amount of communication directly to elected officials. Because while while candidates are impressionable, new legislators are also impressionable. They need to hear from as many voices as possible.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Okay, so Heather, you know, the timing when we, you know, we usually, is the timing still good for when we come? Or when should we come to Juno?
No, I think, I think the.
The timing is good.
Yeah, I was just looking at some of the fly-ins. I think there's one at the beginning of February, one at the end. Certainly, the phone calls and and. You all are involved in some of the committee testimony even outside of the fly-in, so I think. I think those are still good times. Earlier, for sure, earlier in the session is is better because as. Time, i- it's it's good to have it throughout, but I think getting in front of folks earlier. Rather than later, as things start to come together, having that input ahead of time. Jim, do you have any?
No, I think the products we develop this year, we've got to get some of them developed very early. Normally, we don't hit people right after they got certified and start making sure they understand. But this year, it's absolutely critical, I think. Especially with such a big turnover at.
Yes.
A third of the House and a fourth of the Senate, and that's. Even that, it it easily could be higher.
Yes.
Member Lessons also has her hand up. Uh, thank you. I was actually hoping for clarification on the utility of the Juno fly-in. Is it better to be a part of that fly-in or to stand alone? Because it is scheduled for early February. But I just wonder if there's any utility in sending earlier. Representatives in January by ourselves, separate from the rest of. The AASB contingent.
So I would say not earlier than that. The first two weeks of session there, we have a saying in the Capitol that they're. Still trying to find their way to the bathroom, where the bathrooms are. And not a criticism of anyone, but it's just they're they're learning where they're, you know. Where their seat is on the floor and and the protocols and all of that. And really, the first week is really sort of the ceremonial, people are getting sworn in and. Welcoming events and and that kind of thing, organizing committees, assuming that they're. Organized the last two, four years of legislature, two legislatures, the House has taken thirty days in the session to or even organize, so. If that's the case, if that happens again, then we may have more time earlier, but I I, my recommendation now is. Assume that they're gonna be organized before they get to Juno. We'll do these meetings ahead of time, building up to December. Joint lunch or legislative lunch. And maybe even some after that point, but come down that beginning of of February. And and then we can build a strategy around. Additional visits if if that is doable for for you all or. Needed at that. I hope that answered your question.
Was that, is that good, Kelly?
Yes, thank you.
So the, when you're, I want to ask about the, our other priorities that we had last, last year. But do you, who do, who, what, who do you collaborate with? I mean, did, like, we, we have some advocacy work that's being done with. AASB and with the Principals Association, Teachers Association. Do you do any of that kind of collaboration?
Yes.
And so our other. I I suspect that we, I know funding, we will have some, a a priority around funding. Last year, we had one amount like mental health and, well, I think it was, it wasn't just mental health. Let me see, let me pull up the. What what we had last year.
Yeah, we talked with Representative Clayman.
Yesterday, oh, cool.
Yeah, and he was describing the challenge that he's had.
With that.
Yes, getting that through and. How crazy it was that it hasn't been something, you know. Part of the the issue is people were trying to wrap other things, other issues into that and. And so it's stalled out during the session, so.
Well, you think you'll be bringing it back?
I do.
Okay. Yeah, that was that mental health trauma, social emotional learning, historic justice practices. In that commitment to student wellness, mental health, safety, that was our priority. And then the other one was had to do with our. I think you've addressed them all. Fair, predictable and proactive funding. What about the teacher recruitment piece? Is that gonna be, you think it's gonna get a lot of retention and recruitment?
I think that conversation comes together around the defined benefits. And yes, I, that will definitely be part of the legislative agenda.
We, we have that last, the defined benefit, we had. Foundation of programs standards.
So, okay, yeah, there were two bills last year in particular, one. Address just public safety firefighters. That was Representative Josephson's bill and moved over to, got all the way. Made it through the House and up to Senate Finance, and the second bill was Representative. Prior Hopkins bill that addressed all of it. That bill did not pass the House, but there was. You know, sort of a strategy put together that should that bill, the the one that just was firefighters and public safety. Make it to the last committee referral that. We could put in. You know, for education, yeah, hers and hers.
I'm surprised it wasn't in there at the beginning, but hopefully it'll come back.
There's a lot more sympathy for first responders. Was a strategy from way back. I will say it's become okay to talk about it now, where ten years ago. If you brought up that you wanted to find benefits, then more than half the legislature is like, we, you and I don't need to talk anymore. It's acceptable in blind society.
There's a lot of worry that by bringing back the defined benefits, whether it's to one. Or two groups or the whole. Public employee pool that the unfunded liability will grow again. And so their municipal governments are concerned about that, and so the the discussion is really the trade-off, right? It's the, what are we spending at, within each of these groups on. Recruiting and training and trying to retain them before they leave the state and and go somewhere else. And versus. You know, what we would be saving on that, on that front end and how does, so this, the bill that dealt with just firefighters. Or public first responders. Tried to put in sideboards, a- and they did have some, some good ones built in to try to mitigate any. Additional cost. I think in the end, Actuarial came back and said it would be about a four million dollar. Increase to the state, just with that one group. And that would be not in the unfunded liability, but more in the. In the general funds that were gonna be spent this year. So last year, the arm board that manages. The trust funds for retirement and both the pension and the healthcare made a recommendation, I think they're meeting. Either this week or next, but they they recommend to the legislature and the governor. What the contribution should be for the coming year, and last year, the health funds were. Solvent, they they recommended no additional money there, and so. This year, that's gonna, that may be different, given the markets and where things have gone, and so they they may have. May need some more contribution, and so that will make the conversation more difficult, if that's the case.
In the back of your minds, when people talk about defined benefits, just remember that two out of the last three years, there were legislators. To even people in the executive branch at state level that realize one way to. Reduce their costs is to shift the percent of payment for those benefits from the state to the school districts. Where they could still say we fully funded education, but then could. Could have increased our personnel costs on that side significantly by millions. And it's not something that comes out in the public, so, you know, we all, I think most of us believe there should be a defined benefit. I mean, we we certainly have to look at something besides what we're doing now. But just understand, sometimes if you get what you asked for and what you really, really want, that that it it can come back. It can come back when social security, well, like social security. There were people pushing social security even last year, and I talked to a lot of people and made sure they understand that the employee now is gonna pay six point two percent. Their salary goes into that, it's not free, free, it's your paycheck now is smaller, and on top of that. The district's costs go up by six point two percent, and it's by far largest bargaining group, so. So they see less, we pay more, and when they turn sixty-five, maybe it'll be there, and then once people kind of, the other. Districts started realizing that was what was really being discussed, it kind of fell out of favor pretty quick, but it. It was pushed early in the session by some, but they didn't, they didn't do the math, they didn't understand what they were asking for. And that's why I think the shift to defined benefit, but then in defined benefit, even Governor Dunleavy's first year. When he said he was gonna cut education, one of the things I was hearing from Juno was one of those could be a shift. Where you don't really cut it, you just shift how much the percentage of the state and US pay towards the the tier one and tier two. So, you know, as you're talking to experienced legislators, those are the kind of questions that you probably ask them. As to what their thoughts are, but not the junior ones.
Corey has his hand up, Mr. Ains.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to what Jim was saying, and I think that conversation is a little changing, Jim, I think there's been less. Interest in the social security aspect and getting rid of the the piece that eliminates me from participating in social security.
Ah, right, yeah.
So I think that.
It did, it shifted by March last year.
So, can I, I just wanted to jump in, because we're at one forty-five and, or I'm sorry, twelve forty-five your time. And and we've had amazing conversation, but I would like to spend a little bit of time while everybody is in the room and all this knowledge is in the room. Talking about the legislative outreach plan. Can we pivot to that a little bit so we can incorporate the conversation into what the actual plan? Is gonna lay, be laid out to be for?
Sure, we can. At our last, I can't remember which meeting, but we talked about creating. A way to give people information that was not like politically, and we talked about pieces of the plan today. We talked about getting that list of candidates so that we will have that, and we could start making those connections. MJ is here, and so he. You know, in terms of how we, what 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 we do as a, how we set up a webpage that might give. People a a link or something to check who their legislators are, shi- sharing our legislative priorities when we have them. So that that is not, that was, I don't think I was supposed to put, we were supposed to put it on this agenda item. But MJ will have a report for us at the next one, next meeting, is that correct?
Yeah.
At the October fourth meeting, Madam Chair.
Awesome, thank you.
But we did get some good thoughts today.
The conversations.
Yeah. I I just think that the board itself. Making sure that we are being as, you know, good advocates, as active as we can, having those talking points. Throughout the, you know, throughout the session, but even before, now that we're talking to the candidates. So we can give some more thought to what that that's gonna look like. I think we have some talking points. But, yeah, we'll we'll get to that and at the next, the October fourth. Meeting, not, not fourth, but October, whatever it is.
And can I just add to that, one thing that I think, just sort of building on that a little bit, legislators. Have usually a really robust outreach to their district through newsletters and emails, just. Not just responding to certain questions or concerns, but they do several, they do their. District meetings, they'll come back during session and do an Anchorage caucus. And meetings up here during session at least once. But I think, so I guess my. My thought was getting those, what MJ is gonna put together and and what you're developing on that front. To legislators to be able to also, so it's not just the board through this whole thing. From Ford to legislator, but then legislator to their particular districts and giving them. Those talking points and facts is, will be helpful for them to communicate, and I think that helps with sort of the grassroots. Outreach and broadening that and then up to the legislature.
Who's on, who's next? I think. Kelly and then Carl.
Um, thanks, everybody. The one thing, oh, I'm echoing, but um, I think it's really important that we. Empower community members through information, and I think very highly of the. ASDK12.org/fy24 website that the team put together. I use it in my community council presentations right now, because it is this great archive and repository. And landing space for people to be empowered, and I think that that is a key component of how we can educate. Families, education stakeholders, you know, and every two weeks as we get more. You know, and every two weeks, as we get more terrible options for cutting the budget, those are more people who I think can be empowered to better understand, oh, this is really at stake. So I think that that needs to be a part of our communication. And then the second thing is, you know, showing how, where do schools sit in relation to these candidates? So, you know, if I really care about school XYZ, let's link legislative candidates one, two, three, and four to school XYZ and say, these are the people who would represent this, the school based on, you know, the mapping. So, so that if, you know, you're a high school or a middle school or an elementary school and maybe your school is slated to close, that becomes very tangible for a legislator to grapple with. So I think that as much as we can educating people and providing them information that they can use. And this is really, I think, we have, we can't just be seven board members and the administration lobbying on the district's behalf. We have got to enable families and community members to be advocates.
Yeah. And that's a great point because we do, I mean, we share, you know, the districts, the schools with the legislators at our luncheon. But it's, it really is just a matter of sharing that information on our website with them for everybody. You live here, you click here, these are, these are your legislators for your school or your area. So we have that information and we share it, we just have not shared it broadly enough. So that's a good point, Kelly. Carl, I think you had your hand up, I can't see you, but.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I think to, I mean, to speak to Member Wilson's question a minute ago as to, you know, kind of the, the plan and maybe some deliverables from the meeting. And to a point, Miss Brakes, I think, mentioned earlier is now, it's never too early to start interacting with folks who might serve. As a matter of fact, now might be a great time, they might be more inclined to listen to, to voices that, that might be easier to tune out once the session starts. So are we going to, or have we considered mirroring our legislative buddy process that starts kind of with, kicks off with the legislative luncheon? And just assigning board members, candidates in our area of service this year formally and asking that each of us start reaching out to those individuals? Is that something we can put together and get that list going now, pre-November eight?
Absolutely, we can do it, we just don't, it'll just be for the people who are, and then we'll update it later. So we can do that, we have that, the legislative buddies, we do have that.
Right, well, I'm just proposing we start with, I mean, at this point, everyone's a king, I mean, everyone, but everyone in the Anchorage Caucus is a candidate, right? So at this point, we would have, you know, a couple people to reach out to potentially. But having, starting those conversations before they're even sworn in, I think for us, holds value. And then I'll, I'll circle back again, and I, it might just be repackaging things already currently on our website. But if we could have a, a front and back, or even just two or three page quick citizen's guide to education funding, things that cover items that come up in community council meetings like what, what our administration costs are and that they are roughly one percent of our general budget, general fund budget. And just hitting on some of those points that often derail the conversation very early on to get into really a more meaningful understanding of, of why ASD and other districts around the state are in the position they are in. To me, there's value there too, so I'll leave it there.
So when we get Heather's list, we will update our buddy list and get, and we can get that out to people. And so anyway, Madam Chair, I'm back to you.
No, you're fine, you're in the room, and I appreciate the conversation and everyone's comments. And I appreciate Heather, your update and you coming to the meeting to, to update everyone. So thank you for all the work you're doing as well. Just wanted to throw it back out there, if anybody has any questions, any comments. Heather, if you have any additional, or Jim, if you have any additional information you want to share. Just wanted to be very respectful of everyone's time. And I, I do see that, that Member Lessons has raised her hand again as well.
Thanks, just real quickly, because I don't know, what is the statutory deadline for notifying our teachers that they would be laid off?
For this coming year, I think it's May eighth and May twenty-third. I'll double check that, you'll see that on a chart in October, November timeframe. I think it's the eighth and the twenty-third, though.
Thank you.
And twenty-third for non-tenured. And generally, we would notify the, the, the union leadership the day prior.
I, I also want to, Corey, if you have any additional comments, I want you to give you the opportunity as well.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure what the question was. I'm sorry, I had stuff up for a moment, Dora.
Oh, I, I can't see.
Just closing comment, if you had anything closing, okay. Heather had one more comment.
Just on that point about the statutory deadline, May eighth and May twenty-third are on both ends of adjournment, the legislature. So just in the spirit of managing expectation of having a budget passed by May eighth, unless, you know, every year they talk about trying to get out early and it never happens, except for COVID. That did that one year, yeah. So just in managing expectations, I think we, we, we push hard, we communicate, we make sure they understand what that means. You know, February, our February date versus the, the May eighth and then the twenty-third. But, and, and making sure that they really understand that and what those deadlines mean. But I just want to make sure everyone, you know, sort of manage that expectation that the likelihood of that, a budget being passed before adjournment is really slim.
Well, what we're really asking in order to meet that is for them to separate out education from the rest of the operational budget, right? That is the only way it's even remotely feasible. It almost happened several years ago where they were going to, they almost got education out separate, but then COVID hit and they were leaving early anyways, so they just threw it back in with the rest. But it was close in twenty. So they, it is possible, but that's the one mechanism that would allow them to do it is if they could focus on education separate, while all the other stuff's really still happening. But there's so much pushback because if you do education first and you haven't handled the PFD and all the others.
You lose leverage.
Right.
You lose the leverage of the negotiation at the end.
Not really your fault. One thing I would say that we need to bring up more, historically, districts always advocated for more funding. But we're actually shifting to where we're advocating for employees a little bit. And that's not always been the case. It used to be if you talked to the district without advocating for defined benefit, it's like, well, that's completely out of our hands, we can't vote on that. But, but more and more districts are starting to want some things in order to be able to retain. It has a cheering effect on your workforce if they're aware of it, and they're not automatically aware of it. They're not following that clause, and Corey's not going to say anything else. But it's, it's something that as we're taking those positions, we need to make it known, workforce. Just so you kind of feel like we're actually in the same, same lines.
That must be a silence.
You know, there's, there's a lot of pers, junior people in tours who don't realize that the reason they're paying into tours and pers is so there isn't a larger liability for the state. So they're paying into it, they're just not getting anything from it. What they're doing is they're continuing to keep tours alive for the tier one and tier two. That's what's really happening with the money we've paid to the state on behalf of tours. So the money's still going in, so from a state perspective, they're now reliant on these tier-three tours payments that come in every month to, to to take care of the unfunded liability for the people who are retiring. Because now we're getting the tier one, are, are getting ready to, well, there are, I have been retiring. But now we're really getting closer, there's going to be a lot of them. So there, there, there are people at the state level who, who are really uncomfortable with defined benefit, and most of them are in the money world because they don't know how to keep the pension plan alive unless they increase the tourist benefits that get paid on behalf. So it's, it's not clean because everyone says, oh, it'll be free if we do this. Well, of course, nothing's free. But, but what they don't realize is the money that we're paying in for a teacher we hired four weeks ago is going to pay for a teacher who's going to retire next month. Because of unfunded liability in their pension plan. So there, there will be, there'll be those initial discussions on defined benefit and then those deep discussions about how much will that increase tours in order to reduce the liability, the unfunded liability, because they can't allow that to grow, right? I mean, some states have, and then they almost, they just crash.
Not, not to go down the rabbit hole too deeply, but part of the problem with the funded liability, it's a healthcare cost. It's always, it's used to be so much of it. And then suddenly, it's starting to lighten, it just spiraled up because the health benefits appear more and fewer.
It's that in a lot of states, like our federal government has done with social security, use that as a pool to pay for other high priority items. And, and we've seen it at the federal level with what was going in for social security. They have funneled off a lot of money out of that for other things that were somewhat retirement related. And in some states, they just didn't pay enough in either, right?
The new proposals don't have those kind of health benefits, which I would think should make, I mean, you go right down to find benefits in insurance policy, and people make money on those.
Right.
That they ought to be able to factor a cost and, and not have that unfunded liability over the long term. Like Las Vegas, as long as enough people are playing.
Or they just increase what goes in, right? I mean, that's the other way to get rid of it, is just to increase the on behalf payments.
I, I wanted to be very respectful of, of not only your time, but I know the governance meeting is scheduled to start at one, and we're at one oh one right now. So I, I'm not trying to cut people off, and, and y'all can talk as long as you want.
Andy just got a little chatty.
Yeah. The governance meeting will be starting a little bit late.
Thank you, Heather, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone for coming, and we'll just say we're officially adjourned.
We are.